We will start as soon as TC Media comes on. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, July 6, 2023, Tom Water City Council. And we will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Sorry.
I'm here. Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy. Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Othouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agave.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am present and join me in our pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We have two special items this evening and and I'm also, we have guests in our audience who will accept these proclamations. So I look forward to having them come up to the podium when after the proclamation is read. The first proclamation is Juneteenth, which is June 19, 2023. And if Councilmember Jefferson would read that proclamation?
Proclamation, whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth, who are declared equal, not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas on January 1, 1863, using his war powers as president, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves shall be then dance forward and forever free. The Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly four million slaves in states that had seceded from the United States. And whereas on June 19, 1865, nearly nine decades after our nation's founding and more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, enslaved African Americans in Galveston, Texas, finally received word that they were free. And whereas celebration of Juneteenth began June 19, 1866, with parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. As freed families immigrated away from Texas, they carried the Juneteenth celebration with them, commentating Juneteenth with celebrations across the country. And whereas Juneteenth is a day of profound significance, slavery has left a catastrophic and unrelenting legacy of trauma for generations of African Americans, as known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day. Juneteenth is a holiday that celebrates the emancipation of slavery and a day that reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from our darkest moments with purpose, resolve, and unity. And whereas members of the Fred U. Harris Lodge, number 17, have hosted a community-wide barbecue annually in celebration of Juneteenth for more than 40 years, drawing over 500 participants. With the formal recognition of Juneteenth as a federal, state, and city holiday, members of the lodge have invited the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tom Water to join in the celebration of Juneteenth. And whereas people in the Olympia, Lacey, Tom Water area are invited to join the Fred U. Harris Lodge, number 17, on Saturday, June 17, from 11:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Regional Athletic Complex, otherwise known as RAC, in Lacey to celebrate this African-American cultural tradition with music, barbecue, and activities in a community-wide celebration of Juneteenth. Now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tom Water, do hereby proclaim Juneteenth, June 19, 2023, and calls on the people of Tom Water to join together on Juneteenth to reflect on the past, to commit together to continue to eradicate systemic racism, to look to the future, and to work each day to lift each other up for collective prosperity and liberty. Signed in the City of Tom Water, Washington, and recognized on this sixth day of June in the year 2023. Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you. In our audience today, we have Lester Dixon and we also have Melvin Butler. So I will come and bring you the actual proclamation. And also. Oh.
Just a few words. Of course, you stole all my thunder when you put it all in the proclamation. But anyway, hopefully, the citizens of Tom Water heard that reading. And we again extend the invitation to all the citizens of Tom Water to the Regional Athletic Complex located at 8345 Stilicon Road, Southeast and Lacey. The activities begin 11:30 a.m. and last until 4 o'clock. Again, we have fun and games, friendship, and opportunity to meet community leaders. And certainly, the city officials, including you, Mayor, are invited to come out. And certainly, we will have community service organization providers there as well. We ask that participants bring a non-perishable food item for the donation to the Thurston County Food Bank. It's not required, but we actually say, so desired, please bring one so that everyone may be fed at some point. Now to this call, Fred U. Harris Lodge gives thanks to you, Mayor Sullivan, council members, and other city officials of the City of Tom Water and your partnership, which we hope will continue far beyond today and many years to come. We look forward to seeing, feeding, and entertaining each of you at the event. And thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So June is always a really busy month. Our next proclamation is for the LGBTQIA2S+ Community Pride Month. And Councilmember Dahlhoff will read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the City of Tom Water recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is the diversity of its people and has a longstanding tradition of upholding the dignity of the individual, supporting legal equality and fair treatment for all people, and ensuring that acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated. And whereas in 1993, the City of Tom Water passed its first ordinance to protect people from discrimination by adding sexual orientation to its unfair housing practices law. And whereas in 1997, Tom Water became the smallest city in the United States to grant domestic partnership benefits to its employees and has since enacted several policies to ensure equality for all Tom Water residents, such as the Equal Benefits Ordinance. And whereas the City of Tom Water is a national leader in affirming the civil rights and inane innate dignity for all people and encourages the free expression of all cultural traditions and personal talents for the social enrichment and betterment of the community. And whereas Tom Water's diversity policy statement affirms its belief that diversity strengthens workforce competence and performance, celebrates and values individual differences, serves an increasingly diverse society, ensures the relevance of the city's mission, programs, and services, and is crucial to the city's ability to serve every resident. And whereas in recognition of the Stonewall uprising, considered the tipping point for the gay rights movement in the United States, each June, Americans come together to celebrate LGBTQIA2S+ Community Pride Month and honor their contributions to society. Now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the City of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim the month of June 2023, LGBTQIA2S+ Community Pride Month. And she calls upon the people of the City of Tom Water to join in celebrating diversity, promoting inclusion, and equal protection under the law. And she further encourages people to join her in eliminating discriminatory policies and practices towards any culture, race, or group.
Great. Thank you. So I believe we have Natalie Kolwitz, is that correct? And from the Capitol City Pride, and I will come and bring you your proclamation. And I just wanted to state that what we added this year was the two plus in our proclamation has to do with twin two spirits for Native American, which is now being recognized. So we wanted to make sure we added that to our to our list, to our proclamation. So I'll bring this down to you. And I will go ahead and present pencils. That's just our little token.
Well, thank you all so much. Like I was saying, my name's Natalie Koblenz. This is Kai Abrahamson, and I wrote a little speech. First and foremost, I'd like to speak my way into your hearts with an abundance of gratitude for the tremendous honor. I am absolutely tickled pink with this standing here before you, representing a community that celebrates love and acceptance and unapologetic self-expression. What a fabulous city you are, Tom Water. Thank you for doing this for us. We, when we received the news of this recognition, my heart did a little dance of joy. I couldn't help but think about the remarkable strides this beautiful city has made with embracing diversity and how it has become a beacon of hope and inclusivity for all walks of life. So thank you again. And we wanted to let you know about our Pride Festival so that you know when and where it is. And you're all invited. Everyone's invited. So please come. It's going to be on July 1. And we're going to march in unity, starting at the Tavoli Fountain, which is at the Capitol Campus. And we're going to walk down or up Capitol Way all the way to Percival Landing and to the Port Plaza where our show is. And so you're all welcome to come and participate on July 1 from 10:30 to about, you know, 6 o'clock. So we welcome you there. And thank you for this proclamation and the pencil.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is public comment. And so do we have a sign up sheet?
And we have no one online.
No one online. Okay. And then just a reminder that public comment is three minutes. And we do have a clock that hopefully is working this evening. So the I only have one on here, Dave Nicandary.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Dave Nicandary, 505 Fourth Avenue Southwest, former city councilman from the 1970s and 80s, current Historical Commission member and city's designated the Public Facilities District. Thank you for that appointment, Mayor. I forgot to thank you for that the last time I was here. About which, I was here a month ago with an inquiry into the city's set of policies and posture relative to the Berkeley decision in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. I also asked for information on the city's policies relative to the banning or lack of, well, banning, I think is the right word, of future natural gas hookups or and other transitional elements in the Thurston County, get the right name here, Climate Action Plan. Ann Cook was very responsive in getting that information to me. I want to state that. And as was Alyssa Woods Jones. That must be you. No, she's not here. Okay, she's online perhaps. It was also the forwards to the particular sections of that plan that helped me in my study. So I want to make one comment, and I know that although the clock's not running, although I know I'm on a short leash here. You'll probably be seeing me here quite a bit in the next few months and meetings. And I'll request your forbearance in that regard in advance. I'm going to go into some of the particular aspects of that plan now that I've been a Pride student and have read it. But but the one thing I want to immediately refer to is Ann's second email to me regarding the state building code, their creation of advisory groups to consider, and I'm reading from this memo now, to consider stakeholder proposals, modifying sections in the commercial and residential energy codes because of the legal uncertainty stemming from the California Restaurant Association, the city of Berkeley, in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Now, before I go any further, I want to say I'm not a climate change denier or global warming denier. In fact, I've written a book on climate change. The subtitle is "Voyaging to the Icy Lattitudes." What I am a skeptic of are some supposed climate change solutions, which I think are ill-advised, and I'll be going into that in more detail. But my particular question tonight is if there's an opportunity for the city to designate a citizen for participation in these stakeholder proposals or as Ann's note says later, that the SBCC staff will compile these proposals for the full council to consider at a later date. I would request notification of any briefings, whether it's of a subcommittee or the full council meeting, that when those recommendations might be coming forward. In closing, I do find it worthy of remark that whereas the Boise decision, the famous Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision, is considered dispositive, it guides all municipal regulation of occupation of public spaces. That's considered law, but this court decision by the same very same circuit, unanimous, by the way, is uncertain, legally uncertain. So I find that to be an interesting double standard. I'd like some clarification on how one ruling of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals could be guiding policy implementation along these lines, but another is up for study and review. I just find that to be an interesting anomaly. So I don't like having to be a gadfly about this, but I think it seems to be in the cards, but I appreciate your time and attention. And I'll look forward to talking to you further and any further information the city's legal office or Ann and other staff might be able to provide me. In the meantime, would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Hey, anyone else in the audience who did not sign up for public comment but wish to speak? All right. So that we will move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion for to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. There won't any discussion on the motion. I don't think we need to have a discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. With that, we approve minutes for the City Council Work Session of May 9. City Council Meeting of May 16, approval of minutes for the Council Work Session on May 23, payment vouchers, grant agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for community forestry assistance, reappointment to Rado Shane Harrington to the Board of Parks and Recreation Commission, and Thunder in the Valley 4th of July fireworks display permit. So with that, all those items were passed. Now we will move to public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is Resolution R 2023-008, the Six Year Transportation Improvement Program. And Mary Heather Ames will go ahead and present that.
Good evening, Mayor Sullivan and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the introduction to this information prior to your public hearing. This is our Six Year Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, for the years 2024 through 2029. And as you know, this is a yearly process set forth in state law, specifically RCW 37 or 3577010. So each city prepares a list of transportation projects for the next six years, which becomes our local TIP. Those lists are submitted through the local planning organization, and ours is TRPC or Thurston Regional Planning Council. And those go to the state to become the STIP, which is the Statewide Transportation Improvement Program. So there's a lot of acronyms in this process, and you may hear me say TIPSTIP, referring to the process as a whole. So the TIPSTIP process is the foundation of transportation funding within the state of Washington. And you may notice in that second bullet, the word comprehensive, this means that this list is probably not technically doable, but we've instead we've listed as many projects as possible so that we're positioned to apply for lots of different types of funding. The changes to the TIP this year can be grouped into three main categories. We've removed, we've modified, and we've added. So the project that has been removed is the Tom Water Town Center Connector Road. And I'll call these out as we look at the specific list. And we've added a new project, Trasper Road, Little Rock Road to Interstate 5. This is the table from your meeting materials, and admittedly, it's very small. But I would like to call your attention to the final line, which is that new project, the Trasper Road, Little Rock Road to I-5. This includes planning and preliminary engineering to address capacity and safety issues in this location. And remembering that this is a six-year plan, that one we're looking at more like the sixth year. So that that might be in 2029 sort of a thing. And as long as we're here, you'll also see the second line, which is the East Street Connection. You are not, yes, that is the one that currently funding is not secured, but it's here so that we can get funding. And there has been some discussion of that project recently. So we want to make sure you know that it's still it's still on the list. On this page, there aren't any particular changes or additions that I'd like to call your attention to. Instead, I think it is good to call out the continuation of our pavement maintenance program, which is funded in large part by the Transportation Benefit District. So this is a substantial chunk of money that really improves quality of life for the users of our street network. And finally, I'd like to call out the last project. This is the Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal Project, which you council added to the current 2023 to 2028 TIP a few months ago. It is carried into next year's TIP as it will move into construction next year. So this year, we have over 35 million planned in grant funding with over 50 million in local funds for a total of nearly $90 million, which this is the reminder that this is not financially constrained, and we do include the projects here to make sure that we're ready to apply for funding. But on the other hand, I want to say we have been quite successful with grant funding. So we are going to do our best to complete as much of this as we can. This map shows where all that money will be put to work. And you can see that it's spread over a lot of our city, although because grant funding is largely available for those more major roads, there are definitely more of the major roads highlighted here. So with that, I ask that following the public hearing, you consider approving Resolution R 2023-008, adopting the city's Six Year Transportation Improvement Program for 2024 through 2029.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, thank you. Great briefing. And thanks to your team for your work with grant funding. So do you, is there a specific grant writer on staff? Because it looks like you guys are doing tremendous work and we're getting those grants.
There is not a specific grant writer. It's several members of our team end up contributing. Preparing a grant is is a lot of work and requires a diverse set of skills. So luckily, we have people who are really good at posting out projects, people who are good at explaining and and writing about the projects and those who come up with the dreaming up of the projects. So I like that we all work together really well.
Great. Please tell them job well done and thank you.
I will. Thank you.
Councilmember Kathy, do you have a question?
I do. All right. Thank you, Mary Heather, for this report. Every year, I, so many years, I look at this and wonder what, where we've made some of our most, you know, our biggest changes or what we've had on for many years. And so this year, I was wondering, could you give some progress report at all on the routes to school? That's kind of a thing for some of about that.
Um, what I can say is that we were successful in a grant application. Well, we expect the award letter in the next few weeks for a Safe Routes to School grant on Second and Linwood. And that's a substantial grant, funding a project there meant to help with students who either walk or bicycle to work or work school.
Great. Now, that's been one that's been on the list for a long time.
Yes.
That's good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before I open the public hearing portion? With that, I'm going to open up the public comment portion of our public hearing. Do I have anyone signed up for a public comment?
We have no one online.
No one online and no one in council chambers. All right, I will close the public comment portion of our public hearing. I, and then I will ask if there's any discussion or any motions on this ordinance. Councilmembers worth that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number R 2023-008, adopting the city's Six Year Transportation Improvement Program for 2024 through 2029. And we've the public works that already approved this back in May, and so I'd like to make the motion.
Great. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Althouser. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next item is another public hearing on the Third Amendment to Development Agreement between the City of Tomwater and the Craft District. And Brandon Hicks will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Sullivan and council members. So I'm Brandon Hicks, Transportation and Engineering Director for the city. And I'm here today to discuss the Third Amendment for the Craft District Development Agreement. And could I get this slide? So as some of you are aware, this this particular agreement has been amended a couple of times for term extensions. And really, there's been a lot of struggles with market. Covid happened. And so I I'm going to admit that along with this project going dormant, my active involvement with it has a little bit too. So I'm going to be reading some notes as I go, but if you have questions, I'm sure that I'll be able to answer. So next slide, please. It's a quick refresher. The Craft District Development Agreement is centered around a five-point-five acre site that's located on Capitol Boulevard near Lee Street and Tomwater Valley Drive. The anchor for the site is South Puget, South Puget Sound Community College's Craft Brewing and Distilling Program. The identity of the district is centered on craft brewing, cider, and distilling. And there's also plans for restaurants, retail, office space, event space, a thousand-person amphitheater. Still at a thousand people, but and more. Next. So on this, I have a list just to give a quick update on what's going on with the development. So what's complete, obviously, is the SPSCC building, which also has Heritage Distillery, and then Percival Creek. Yeah, Percival Creek Brewing. So you've likely seen the roadwork that's on Capitol Boulevard right now as you drive through. Right now, the median is constructed, and then some of the intersection improvements are done. The signalized portion is not complete, and they'll probably be getting that done within the next couple of months. It has to be done before the Market Building opens. The Market Building is going to open in phases with the first three tenants. It sounds like it's going to be late August more than likely, and then the remaining would be phased in late September. And that's subject to change, but right now, that's the plan for the developer. I was told I could share some tenants, because I think they've already been shared, but tenants for the Market Building include Finn River Ciderie, Percival Creek, South Puget Sound Community College, so Percival Creek of the brewery, or the the beer, Sweetless Ice Cream, Olympia Seafood, Left Bank Pastry. I'm going to butcher this, but Pataya Thai Express, Julie Clu Art, Don Juan's Mexican Kitchen, and unnamed brewery, and then there's going to be one vacant space remaining. The food trucks are likely going to show up at about the same time that the Market Building opens up. No names for either of the two trucks that I think are going to be there initially. And then the first event at the amphitheaters tentatively scheduled for September right now. I know that there were some plans on an earlier event, but I think that it conflicts with some other events in the area. And then lastly, the residential development that's on what I have as Lot Four there, which is the lot just south of the commercial portion of the Craft District. That is currently on hold for market reasons, as you can imagine. And so when that does happen, though, we'll start seeing the rest of Tomwater Valley Drive punch through. Next, please. So now for how the city is involved with it, why we are involved with the development agreement. And this will be the third time I've said it, and probably the fourth time you've, some of you have heard it. But so we're really involved for social and economic benefits. There's, it it's hard to quantify what those are, but I guess some to touch on is going to be there's, there is some immediate job and tax revenue that's generated. The biggest one that's kind of hard to quantify is that it it'll create sort of a energy around redeveloping the historical brewery properties. So that's probably the biggest benefit. It sort of brings the anchor there to this sort of spur some action. It's going to be a destination for people from outside of the area. In addition to, it's going to be something for local folks to go do. The agreement itself is primarily focused on cost share for infrastructure that's needed for the development that is also included in city plans. So the 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 infrastructure that is being constructed with the development agreement, we had already planned on doing it. And by partnering, it makes it to where the developer can develop now in the city, get some of the infrastructure in before we planned on pursuing it. And some of those plans include the Brewery District Plan, East Street Corridor Study, and the Comprehensive Water System Plan. Next. On this slide, I show all of the amendments. So we had the original agreement, and and I have before you the the Third Amendment to discuss before the public hearing. The First Amendment was essentially the same as this one, term extension. Really, it just comes down to it has not been practical for the developer to pursue build out of the development given market conditions. Second Amendment was a wholesale scope change. We added in a new lot residential. We had timing for when infrastructure had to be completed, underground conversion, construction of the trail. So the Second Amendment was a real amendment that was more than just time. This Third Amendment, again, is just an extension of the term, and it's similar issues that that they had back for the First Amendment. And then this this particular amendment will extend the term to, that should be December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Next slide. Just as, just for informational, so that you know that it's coming up, we've got two other agreements that we're working on. They're they're mentioned in the development agreement, but they are going to be separate from the development agreement. And those include a shared parking agreement and an amphitheater agreement, so you should be seeing those in the near future. And then last slide. So that that's it for my presentation. Again, it's brief because all it is 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 a term extension. And so pending what happens with the public hearing, the the request is going to be staff recommends that pursuant to testimony at the public hearing, the City Council make a motion approving Resolution Number R two zero two-three dash zero one zero, authorizing the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. But this, sorry, this entire, this is wrong, so I'll go ahead and let whoever. Yeah.
Yeah.
At least it has the right resolution number there. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have prior to the the public hearing.
Questions, Councilmember Althouser, did you have a question?
Just just on the term of expiration in the background packet, it says to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, but it's supposed to be December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, it sounds like I've got some cleanup to do on the packet. It is twenty twenty-five, though.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, I just wanted to know the timeline for completion of the project in the area.
So right now, I I'm going to say that we've thought we've known the timeline for about five years, and it's and it's been moving target constantly. I I got a high-level summary of this year's progress, and then everything in the future, they they honestly don't know. It depends on when lenders are able to open up to this type of development again. So right now, I don't, I don't really have a good answer for you. It's completely market dependent. Right now, there isn't any carrying cost, if that's the right term for the city. It's just a matter of, you know, really, our our hope is that obviously we get Tomwater Valley Drive completed as soon as possible, and and obviously the trail as well. But us, the the developer and us don't really have a lot of control of it right now. But I would like to have a definitive answer for you, but unfortunately, one does not exist. And I did want to, I did want to say Karen showed me the actual resolution, and it, I want to confirm it is twenty twenty-five for the end of the term.
Great. Councilmember Agabi.
So certain individuals in my house who like to know, how come you don't have a bakery shop? Or are you going to have one?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's completely up to the developer. They're the ones looking for tenants, but I'll I'll put a plug in for that. I know that I know that they're actively pursuing.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I just took them out of there.
Yeah, Left Bank Bakery.
Yep, Left Bank Pastry.
Oh, well, you're good, Dan.
Yep. Councilmember Althouser.
Sure, we're all relieved that we can save a trip to Olympia here. Um, so Tomwater, the new Tomwater, the realignment won't be complete until development of parcel four. It's not going to be all the way punched through, like the old Tomwater Valley Drive will remain open until that project commences, because that's linked to the development of that parcel, right?
It's it's a little bit more complex than that, because somebody let an engineer draft the the development agreement and the amendments. So so the way that I have it structured, or that we have it structured, is currently, now that they've opened the Market Building, they can't actually do any other building on the commercial property or anything on the residential property until that is punched through. So it's actually both. The residential property Lot Four was really the best funding mechanism, because it it had the biggest ability to get the loan. So right now, when they want to move on to any building, whether it's residential or anymore on the commercial side, it has to be completed. And that was one of the biggest city. I don't want to call it a gain, but it was one of the biggest city benefits. I'm just going to say benefits with the Second Amendment.
Right. And even even once it's punched through, so long as we don't have additional commercial buildings demanding that traffic or really those parking spaces on the previous Tomwater Valley Drive, does the old Tomwater Valley Drive still remain open until that period of time, because the demand hasn't risen yet?
I envision that the old Tomwater Valley Drive would go pretty quickly, would go away pretty quickly once the road is is pushed through, because we have sort of a chicken and egg situation. Once the road is punched through, it's going to be a lot easier for the developer to get tenants or folks to to want something on the other lots, because the large expense is done. So I imagine once the road is is pushed through, the conversion of the old alignment to parking would happen pretty quickly. And from a transportation standpoint, we're going to want to get that stretch offline anyways.
Because so we wouldn't have to do maintenance or?
Correct. Well, and once the shared parking agreement is executed, yeah, we we essentially, I'm not going to say we'll have no maintenance, but most of the maintenance would be on the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so before I forget, I'm going to open up the public testimony portion of our public hearing. Is anyone signed up for a public comment?
Not online.
All right, no one in council chambers for testimony. Mr. McAndry, come to the podium and go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
David McAndry, five oh five Fourth Avenue Southwest. Just because I'm here, I just want to say, just anecdotally, this is a great project. It's generating a lot of community interest. I drive by it every day going down to exercise. Michael, I'm still waiting for you to come back, by the way. Plenty of coffee down there. And I can't wait to drive that S-curve down to the valley in my sports car. So I'll just leave it that that is my, but it's a great concept, but kudos to everyone who's working on it. It'll, it will go a long way towards knitting the community back, creating a business district, a commercial district, and that part of Tomwater, which had one historically, and it's coming back before our eyes. It's exciting to see, and I just want to offer one citizen's commendation to you and the developer for that effort.
Great, thank you very much. All right, anything else? All right, I will close the public comment portion of our hearing. And does council have any more comments, questions, or are you ready for a motion? Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you. Um, I'm having an allergy check, so excuse me. The, I move that, I shouldn't have said greet to do that. Move to approve Resolution Number R two zero two-three dash zero one zero, authorizing the mayor to sign the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement with the Craft District LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, now we're to the council considerations. The first council consideration is Resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine Golf Cart Lease. And Chuck Denny, our Parks and Rec Director, will be presented.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We're going to do a little bit of a back and forth here today. Ultimately, I'm asking you to adopt Resolution R two oh two-three dash zero zero nine, authorizing the mayor to sign a new lease for golf carts at Tomwater Valley Golf Course. Before I ask that officially, though, we wanted to give you just a little update on what's going on at the golf course, a quick look at numbers, and some talk about expenses and revenue. And then we'll get back to golf carts and the need for that new fleet. So I'm going to turn it over to Russ Olson. Russ is our Golf Operations Supervisor to tell you a little bit about the daily operation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Russ Olson. I am proud to be the Operations Supervisor at Tomwater Valley Golf Course. I believe we do have PowerPoint if we could that up and go to the first slide. I'm going to go through some highlights of some of the activities at Tomwater Valley Golf Course, because we aren't just a golf course. And it is really a community center, and it's something that we've really emphasized over the last decade. First of all, I want to, our our season kicks off with the annual OB Junior Open. This is somewhere where Tomwater went a little different direction than most golf courses. A lot of golf courses go after amateur events, try to get all the best players in the community, and usually they get a beer sponsor, and then all these great golfers duke it out. When we looked at that, no one had a junior championship that was community-based. And so our OB Junior Open is with a community sponsor of OB Credit Union. And what we do is we have divisions for every level of child. So anywhere from ages five to seven, we have them on three hole divisions. And we have nine hole divisions for both boys and girls, and then we have our championship division. And proud to say that that event has grown to ninety-four juniors. And that is one of the largest events next to the WIA State Event that there is. And this year, we had a back-to-back champion who is, who actually took second in two-way golf from Centralia. But I'm proud to say that we had a Black Hills student who was leading with two holes to play and wasn't used to playing with a lead, but ended up taking second place. So just exciting for the local community. It's amazing to see the parents come out and support the families. And it's good, because we get a lot of people from out of town who come and visit and stay in the hotels and 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 provide patronage to the to the local businesses. I would be remiss if we didn't highlight the WIA State High School Championship that we just hosted. Mayor Sullivan was able to come out, and there's a picture there. And with the Upper Columbia Academy team, I was lucky enough to actually be with the Black Hills team in Spokane, because they break up the different divisions throughout the state. And I actually heard about Tomwater Valley at the golf course in Spokane about what a great job. And true story, I had a Tomwater Valley bag, and somebody went, you know what, I heard they have flags, and I hear they're doing it. And I mean, and it, Tomwater rolled out the red carpet, and I just really appreciate the support of that event, and it's a great way to showcase the golf course. We also hold Tomwater Chamber Event, and then, of course, the July Fourth Festival with the Firework Show, Screen on the Green, and the Brew Fest. I'm going to the next slide. Partnerships. Another thing that is critical to the operation of a community-based golf course is partnerships. And I want to start with first tea. I'm very proud of this program. I actually taught the first class with four kids in the pouring rain in November about eight years ago. And I'm proud to say last year, we did over four hundred and thirty-eight kids through our program. Every year, it's grown. Every year, we have a higher retention level. And we're actually to the point of having all female classes, and because, you know, the girls tend to learn better when they're working with their peers, and we're able to provide that level of programming. It's just great. We don't turn. Um, it's just great. We don't turn away any children. Um, they're they apply online um with the fee. If they can't afford the fee, the parents enter the amount they can pay. Um, and that's administered by First T, South Puget Sound, and we're a proud partner of that that organization. Um, we also have uh Tom Water has a unique relationship with Titleist. We've talked about that before. Um, we continue to be the number one public daily fee revenue producer for Titleist north of San Francisco, which is a pretty big deal. Um, we can't hang with the big Bay Area golf courses yet, um but we're doing our very best. Um, it also has a financial benefit to our bottom line. Not only do we collect the revenue sales as we bundle golf balls with every greens fee and are able to move a lot of product from club sales fittings, et cetera, but we actually get a rebate back of over thirty-five thousand dollars, which allows us to purchase range balls at no cost, which is a big expense that we're able to save. Um, we also get uh priority buying and purchasing, which allows us to secure product at a lower price than even pro golf discount. So something to to think about when we're looking at how we gain efficiencies is volume buying. Um, yes, it does create big invoices that come through to Chuck once in a while um and for the council to see. Um, and we do have a lot of inventory that we need to maintain and figure out how to store in limited space, but it is a benefit that we are able to pass on to the customers and and overall the community. Um, lastly, I want to point out a new program that we started this year was just Operations Thirty-Six. Um, golf has been in a in a boom um since COVID. Um, people have really valued getting out and recreating. It's they they're there's a high value placed on that. Um, Op Thirty-Six is an initiative that allows beginners to actually get out on the golf course. Something we failed as teachers and practitioners of golf for a very long time. We say, go to the driving range. It's really hard. You get really frustrated. It's really expensive. So why would you come back, right? Well, Up Thirty-Six breaks that down, and we actually get people out twenty-five yards from the green, and they start playing the golf course. The goal is to shoot thirty-six, which is par from twenty-five yards. Once you do that, you move back to fifty yards. Once you do that, you move back to seventy-five. Very different thinking than you have to master all these parts of the game and play from the very tips of the golf course, which is about seventy-six thousand hundred yards and have a wonderful day, right? So some things we're pioneering. We actually had nine people register this last semester for that class. I expect that well forty to fifty participants in year one of of that initiative, which is something we're very proud of. Um, with that, I will turn it over to, oh, last but not least, I almost forgot the biggest one because it's not on the slide because it's a new initiative, something you're going to hear first. Um, Tom Water Valley is proud to announce that we will be the host of the South Puget Sound Clippers Men's and Women's Golf Team. Um, South Puget Sound has never had a golf team in its history, and it will be announced next week. And I might know the guy who's going to be coaching those teams. So um I will be leading that that charge with a great team of assistant coaches. But we're very proud that we'll be having a new partnership with South Puget Sound Community College and being host of that golf team, which will help with recruitment and everything else within the community, and we will have college matches at Tom Water Valley Golf Course. So very excited for that, and you'll be seeing more about that coming out from South Puget Sound. So with that, I will turn it over to Chuck.
Okay, back into a little a little more reality of golf. With that, I thought I'd uh, can we go one more? Thought I'd start with this one, and if I gave you a chart that had so many numbers on it that you couldn't read it, uh, we just we just go right through. Uh, is there an ability, Melody, to scroll down to that last line on that page? D. Okay, the. Okay, well, I'll just read it to you then. So this is this is one of the ways we track what we do compared to what we have done. Um, these are some somewhat generic numbers, uh, very rounded numbers uh of what we've done revenue and expenses since nineteen ninety-six, when the city bought the golf course uh from Pabst Brewery. We changed our management style about uh eight years ago at the golf course, ten years ago uh to a different structure. We had been following the PGA structure for about fifteen years and and it was some good, some bad. You can see we had some million-dollar years there. Uh, in the early two thousands, two thousand nine, we took a big a big dive, uh, as did most of the economy, and we sort of struggled from there, as did golf. So we uh sent a recreation supervisor from the Parks Department down to golf to be the manager. That's Dave Nickerson, who is still there. Um, we've hired some other golf experts to assist with that. Part of that is is having Russ Olson here. Uh, and we really changed to a community golf course style, and people thought, you know, we're kind of crazy to have a golf guy, not a PGA pro. As someone who also works for the state, uh, have someone who's a basketball coach helping to run a golf course, but it's worked out phenomenally. We've had, and we have a great team down there to uh this day. So we're working to uh try to meet expenses with revenue, uh, difficult, particularly in municipal situation, but we we've brought the golf course into an era where it's it's costing us about as much as it costs us to run a park like Pioneer Park, which which is is coming a long way. The line you can't see, uh, you can see like twenty twenty-one, we're in the one, one-two, one-three uh price for revenue. That's where we want to be. That's kind of our niche within uh golf in this region, uh, and that's uh that's really good for Tom Water Valley. Uh, we have the ability to offer a very low rate uh for people that want to play golf. And yet, um, without undercutting our competition by very much, um, we're packed all the time. And if you've been at Tom Water Valley in the last two or three years, you've seen that our biggest issue on most days is parking. Uh, we don't have enough parking. Um, it's detrimental to um our businesses and certainly detrimental to the business at the Rivers Edge Restaurant. Uh, but as I keep telling them and I keep telling our staff, it's a great problem to have uh versus the alternative. We are working on a new parking lot realignment. That's something we've been aware since we bought the course in nineteen ninety-six. Uh, so we are working uh towards a plan and permitting uh to to redo the parking lot and to uh treat the stormwater uh that comes off of that asphalt, which is currently goes directly into the Shute River, and that's been an an issue since ninety-six that we know we need to take care of. So you'll see that at some point in the future. Getting more into this uh twenty twenty-two numbers that you can't see. Uh, we did one point three six four million uh in twenty twenty-two. Uh, our expenses were just over two million, two zero seven two uh for twenty twenty-two. So our biggest our biggest change for uh this last year was expenses. Many of the things that we use for maintenance supplies, equipment, fertilizers, repairs, uh doubled, tripled in price, um if we could even get products um to the tune of about two hundred thousand dollars more than we had anticipated spending. We tried to look ahead and deal with that prior to the year starting. We raised rates in twenty-two by about five percent. That was the biggest raise in rates that we had done in in probably ten years. Uh, the public took it well. Uh, they understood that our costs were going up like everybody else's costs, and we made a little bit more money. Uh, but still, we didn't keep up with our expenses. So for twenty twenty-three, we have raised rates across the board by an average of about fifteen percent uh to try to catch back up uh and come closer to meeting the costs of our expenses. Okay, so now can I go back to the other slide? Is that readable to anybody? Okay, this this slide shows uh twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, January through the end of May. So focusing on the on the twenty twenty-three line, which is the third one, you can see that um we're ahead of where we've ever been uh for revenue uh in in a lot of major areas in green fees. Uh, in cart fees, that's the rental of golf carts. Um, memberships, those are people who are buying memberships to the golf course. Uh, driving range is up uh a little bit over last year, not quite as far as twenty twenty-one, and we're doing some work on the driving range now to improve the efficiencies and the the ability to maintain that uh area right now. In fact, that's happening this week. Um, part of that is, part of that is um to improve it for golf, and to be honest, part of that is to improve for special events. So when you're out there on the Fourth of July, you're out there in Brew Fest, um, the impression you get, the aesthetics from being on the golf course, it's not just a dry, dusty, dead piece of grass. Um, it's it's nice. It's flat. It's green. Um, it helps us. It helps us on the range to pick up golf balls, which is an important factor. Uh, it'll also help us in special events, making them more special and something that we can uh promote a little bit more. Part of that expenditure, not to get too far afield, part of that expenditure for improving the driving range is coming out of the out of the profits from Brew Fest. So that event is giving back to the venue uh to help pay for that. Golf overall, uh, golf is up. You'll see uh it's up a hundred and five thousand dollars from last year. Um, it's just that just about every every category that we have to show you tonight is up over what it was last year. We had a banner last year, year last year, uh, and we're beating that again this year. So um golf's going well. Uh, golf staff, Dave, Russ, Tyler, uh Eric Thompson, our newer, he's a newer employee. Uh, our course superintendent doing a phenomenal job. Um, we have a myriad of part-time uh seasonal people that work down there from sixteen to sixty-five um and a whole bunch of volunteers that make that facility go. So it's really very small city staff and a whole bunch of people that that care very deeply and help us help us make it work. So if you, I'll take any questions you have on that, and if you don't have any questions on that, move on to golf carts.
Any questions? I think you can go ahead and move on.
Okay, the the city enters into a lease uh for golf carts. Typically, every five years, we rent a fleet of between fifty-five and sixty electric golf carts. Um, we typically uh rent them from uh PNC Bank, which rents uh goes through Easy Go out of Atlanta, Georgia, Easy Go Golf Carts. The fleet we have now is going on its seventh year. Um, there were there were supply issues through COVID and couldn't get them, couldn't get them for a year, couldn't get them for a year and a half. Um, we started a contract process last year, and then we sort of dropped that when they said, yeah, you're going to get, you're not going to get any carts this year, no matter what you do. Um, and so we picked that back up after hearing from Easy Go that their supply is if just a few months out now rather than a year, year and a half. So uh staff's doing a great job of trying to keep our carts going. You know, those batteries wear out after being used. You know, they do two, sometimes three rounds of the golf course a day, and then they get recharged at night. I don't know how many we'll be able to use during the Fourth of July parade, but uh the it's worn out. We're getting to the point where the cost of maintaining the carts is exceeding the cost of um what it costs to get a new fleet. So we want to turn that over. Uh, and this is a a lease. It's a five-year lease for seven hundred and about seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Um, that works sort of amount to about a hundred and forty, about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year. Last year, we brought in a hundred and ninety-nine, almost two hundred thousand dollars in revenue off of the rental of golf carts. So this is one of those things where we we paid to bring it in, and we set, we sell it to the customer at a higher price and make a profit. Um, and that's certainly the case with carts. It's also a a necessary amenity to get people to go out and golf, frankly, uh, these days. The carts come with uh GPS screens, so you can see where you are on the golf course. You can see how far it is to the water, to the trees, to the green. Um, and an important feature that they have now on these carts is that we can also see uh where each and every golf cart is in the pro shop. That's something we've never been able to do. So uh people do try to steal carts. Uh, people do take carts in places where they shouldn't be and hopefully not into the river. Uh, people drive carts into the parking lot, which is extremely dangerous. Uh, if you've been down Tom Water Valley Drive at a time or two. Um, so uh this gives us the ability from the pro shop to shut carts down um to message people directly to a specific cart about what they're doing or what they should be doing uh and to set them so they won't drive in the parking lot. They'll stop by themselves at the end of the golf course. So uh, much better car. It's a higher efficiency uh electrical battery system. It's as a recharging system. And we're very excited to move forward and and hopefully get those. So with that, I would turn it back to you and and ask you to adopt Resolution R two zero two three zero zero nine and authorize the mayor to sign that lease.
Any questions or comments? Of that or a motion? Councilmember Kathy?
I'd like to make a comment um of great gratitude for us hanging in with the golf course during really some hard times. Now, both Chuck and Russ now uh probably in years past came to uh council with fear and trepidation because we were trying to cover costs and all of that kind of thing. So all of this is wonderful news, and I just want to tell you also what we've done through the first T. Russ is is wonderful. First T changes kids' lives and gives them leadership skills and uh teaches them to honor one another and be fair and kind. And I just think you've done a great job with the youth um at the at the golf course. And um I've heard some of the same comments around the, you know, the area about Tom Water Golf Course, and it uh it makes me makes me proud that. And I also uh know the value of golf carts, and uh these are pretty, pretty nice golf carts. And so golf carts actually draw people to certain courses. And uh so I'm going to make a motion that we uh I don't have the numbers or things in front of me, so if somebody would fill that in, that would be great. But I move that we purchase these golf carts, the le- the lease for these golf carts.
Uh, oh, second, uh, Councilmember Kathy's uh motion to adopt Resolution R two zero two three dash zero zero nine authorizing the mayor to sign a new lease for golf carts at the Tom Water Valley Golf Course.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahlhoff. Um, it's good to have the official things.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Kathy, seconded by Councilmember Dahlhoff. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much. And uh I will say, when I was down there for the the uh the high school uh championships, I looked at the golf course and I went, wow, they those golf carts are really worn. We really need to replace it. And you said, funny thing you would be mentioning that. It will be. Yeah, you can, they're well-used, but you know what? At two hundred or three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty rounds of golf a day, it's going, they're going to get used and and they're definitely needed. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And any anytime anyone wants to come down and see the behind the scenes of the golf course, just let me know. I'm happy to go down and take you through what happens behind the scenes and how maintenance works or anything like that.
Are you an avid golfer?
I am.
Are you an avid golfer?
He is, and he's a good, and he's a very good golfer also.
I don't know. I don't know how far I'd go down that road, but yeah.
You know, I, if we come down to see the um the, you know, inner workings of the golf course, when will we get to ride in a new cart?
Uh, August or September.
Okay.
I will, I will be sending them a message tonight.
Great.
Get us on the books.
Great. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is uh offset leased uh with uh South Puget Sound Community College, and Dan Smith will present that.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thank you for uh the opportunity to present tonight on a uh proposed lease agreement with South Puget Sound Community College to site new offices for the Water Resources um Department for the uh Planning and Programs, the administrative side of what we do. Uh, go ahead and fire that up. Thank you. Um, so the question is, why move? Well, you know, as 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 many of you know, and as it was kind of discussed through the last budget process, you know, City Hall for staff capacity is nearing um its limits. Um, Water Resources Sustainability is bringing on a new staff member um literally started yesterday, Monday. Uh, Transportation Engineering is looking at two to three new individuals um in the basement area um in the in the coming months. We're in a telework is at capacity, meaning where we are trying to share spaces with other staff to accommodate um both for telework and in-office staff. And those capacities, that that work is really at capacity. We have no more ability to share those spaces um and accommodate um the folks that need to be in the office. Um, so that collaboration is is at its at its peak as well. Um, as as a good example of that, the Water Resources um and Sustainability Program Manager that started yesterday is actually sitting in a in a desk space that's reserved for a Transportation Engineering uh member, and luckily through the hiring process for for us, not necessarily Transportation Engineering, um, they weren't able to bring a person on, and so we have some flexibility now over the next few months to be able to offer that space um to our manager as we work through um where our offices are going to be located as we move forward. As many of you know, who's been here during the day, during the week, parking is at capacity. Um, there are very limited spaces, not only for staff, but also for the public to be able to access City Hall. Um, and growth is continuing regardless of whether or not uh we we relocate offices or find additional space for us. The city is is growing um from a population perspective, from a commercial perspective, as well as the city staff is needing to grow um to to help meet those demands. Um, so as you know, as I mentioned earlier, the city council budgeted in twenty-three, twenty-four for this current biennium, some limited funding for transportation and engineering to evaluate what an off-site move would look like. Um, so as those discussions continued, uh, we started evaluating, you know, did it make the most sense for transportation and engineering to uh basically separate their basically separate their teams onto an offsite location and keeping the remainder of their team here. And you know, and through this conversation, we really kind of determined that public works or the, the Water Resources Sustainability folks, team that we have is the most flexible. We have a small team that is, you know, we don't have a lot of public contact, meaning there's not a lot of folks that come into the office and to City Hall to meet with our team. The most contact we have is, is through incentive giveaways, things like that. But most of our other contacts with the outside is with other state agencies, with other coordinating organizations out there as well. And so a lot of our stuff that we can do, we're doing offsite or we're doing virtually. Anyway, when customers come in to discuss utility, you know, connectivity options, they're really talking with the development engineers, they're talking with community development staff as well. So you know, the limit, there's a real, there's limited access for, or a need for our team to be on site here. So as we, as we started to consider, okay, what does it mean to move offsite? What kind of options are out there? You'd think with all the state offices and the state buildings we have around here, there'd be a lot more options for us. And it really turns out that no, there's either really big office spaces that are available for you or smaller office spaces to accommodate smaller teams. We're kind of in that mid-range area. So we did find one option early on. It was over at Town Center East, which is basically, you know, just down the street from City Hall here. It was able to meet our needs. It was a little bit larger of a space that we, that we were looking for at that point, but was able to potentially accommodate, you know, some of our growth within our team over the next ten years or, you know, and, and potentially some other, as department, other departments were, were to grow. Administrator Don was having a conversation with folks from South Puget Sound Community College and they were, were acknowledging that you know, since the pandemic and change, in addition to technology, students are more and more frequently attending virtual classes. And so that they had actually physical space that wasn't being utilized to, to their full capacity. And they were talking about, you know, ways to kind of accommodate for that. And, and so the conversation turned to, oh, hey, you know, the city is looking for some additional soft office space. What would that look like? And so we began that conversation with SPSCC to consider what building number thirty two over here is one of the options that was presented to us. Former Horticulture Building and unfortunately the picture I have of it down here has been covered by the other picture. So it's basically, let's see if I have the next picture here. Well, I'll skip a section, we'll go over to this one here. It's basically two classrooms that we're, that we're considering on the east side of the building there. It's about twenty four hundred square feet in their natural sciences. On their natural sciences side of the campus where there's some additional programs. This is the former Botany Building as I had mentioned earlier. And so as we kind of considered, what is, you know, what does a layout look like? You know, we had, we had kind of done some potential layouts, how that might work. This is really just kind of conceptual at this point of how we can make that work. But you can see there's some additional space where we can utilize for storage, additional community meeting space or additional telework or not telework, but temporary stations for additional staff, not only from our team, but for, you know, other departments that may need it. So kind of considering, you know, some of the pros and cons of what this move might look like for us, you know, there's definitely more pros than, than cons. But you know, increasing the office space, staff capacity for City Hall, for Transportation Engineering and other departments. You know, right now it also, it corrects kind of a rent and facilities issues. As we started having this conversation broader with facility or finance department. And we realized that, you know, since utilities have been here in City Hall, utilities haven't been paying for those facilities as we would in, in any other situation, you know. And so this actually corrects the situation for City Hall, allowing the general fund, you know, allowing that office space to be available for general fund offices. Transportation Engineering gains staff-ready furnished spaces. Right now, my team occupies five cubicles or four and a half technically and one office. And so that, that space becomes available to Transportation Engineering immediately. Those are furnished spaces, spaces that we couldn't dismantle the furniture and take with us. And so those become staff-ready office spaces. This really kind of, you know, this move, the consideration this moves gives both Transportation Engineering and Water Resources capacity to grow over the next couple of years. You know, I may be optimistic over the ten years that we're going to have enough space, but you know, ideally, you know, we, we anticipate that, you know, we're going to have potentially additional staff. But you know, with twenty four hundred square feet, that gives us some room to add some more staff in there for, for Water Resources Team and as well as Transportation Engineering here at City Hall. It increases the parking capacity. Right now we have nine with the addition of, 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 of our Water Resources Manager today. So right now we have nine spaces that will free up in our parking lot, you know, for those folks that are single, single travel trips for, for our teams. And up to twelve over the next, over the next ten years that we would be otherwise occupying here at City Hall. It frees up some vehicle fleet space. Our back parking lot area is becoming more and more full with fleet vehicles. Right now, Water Resources is anticipating, we have three vehicles. Over the next few years, we anticipate that to grow to six. So this actually frees up space in our, in our fleet parking lot for additional vehicles to meet the city's needs. This addresses council goals, particularly around workforce development and green jobs training. I'll get into a little bit more in that, of that in a minute. I wanted, I wanted the cons, you know, we're talking about, this is actually going to require a budget amendment. It's, as you can imagine, it's not inexpensive to move office spaces and, and facilities and staff and furniture. We're looking at some pretty, fairly significant costs for moving and new furniture up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're, we're planning for under this year. But this is literally a one-time cost of that lease agreement or, or fourth of cost of this move. Over the biennium, this, this existing biennium, it's about two hundred thousand dollars in, in total, about sixty seven thousand dollars to each of the utilities. So this would be split between the water, the sewer and the stormwater utilities to a tune of about sixty seven thousand dollar impact for the lease agreement. And then also would return about sixty two thousand dollars to the general fund. Because the funds that were originally budgeted, budgeted during this biennium was sixty two thousand and that was from the general fund. So some, some limited funding there would go back into that and the remainder would, or the, the overall lease would come from the, the utility budgets. So when we looked at, you know, we tried to, we also wanted to kind of weigh, you know, the pros and cons versus South Puget Sound Community College versus Town Center East. South Puget Sound Community College, we talked to them about a public career promotion. Kind of getting to that work, workforce development, green jobs training. We know that the city is, is working with a lot and the other jurisdictions to consider what would kind of a green jobs training, on-the-job operator training programs look like. Because Water Resources would be moving to college campus, what we would, we have to create an opportunity for a connection to their mission as well. And I think that's in an ideal situation. When Administrator Don first brought this idea to me, I immediately went to the place of, well, this is an opportunity for us to expand on internships, expand on mentorship around you know, environmental science, if, science jobs, you know, for students on campus, for students across Tom Water. You know, we are already in the process of working with Tom Water School District and trying to encourage students to participate in programs around river and creek monitoring, understanding science, scientific data and how that connects to public policy and how we make decisions around projects. So you know, this is really being forced into creating an internship and a mentorship program with SPSCC really kind of helps take that to the next level for us. As I mentioned, kind of a connection, not only for Puget Sound, South Puget Sound Community College, but also a connection to the mission for our Water Resources Team in our city. Percival Creek runs right through the middle of, of, of the college campus there. You know, we've had challenges, you know, in, in administering sewer overflows and managing sewer overflows. We collect data on there. We are doing projects to, you know, encourage or reintroduce salmon throughout that system, that water system. So you know, this really kind of brings that and puts it in our literal backyard, you know, for our staff to work with the students to see the results of the work that our programs are doing firsthand right there in our backyard. And so that's pretty exciting to be able to see that. And you know, not to mention that the building has windows versus living in a basement where we haven't had any windows for a long time. There's full-time security on that campus for, for South Puget Sound Community College. We would have dedicated fleet parking over there. So where are the staff, the, the, the staff vehicles that we would be bringing over from our fleets would have dedicated and reserved marked parking for that. We, we would be looking at an EV electric vehicle charging partnership with South Puget Sound Community College. So one of the parts of the agreement would be to find financial opportunities to bring chargers to the campus, not only for our fleet vehicles, which are intended to be a hundred percent electric over the coming years, which we have two on hand. We have a, we have a hybrid now. And we have actually got our first electric vehicle about a month ago and we have another one on order, you know, coming later this year, hopefully. So we need, we need electric vehicles or electric chargers for our vehicles and we would help increase the capacity, not only for the community, but also for SPSCC by having public charging stations over there. There's a fantastic public agency partnership with South Puget Sound. You heard earlier tonight, the, the, the work that, you know, the city's been doing with the craft brewing district over there, distilling district. You know, this is just, you know, another example of the fantastic partnerships that South Puget Sound Community Colleges had with the city. This would be another element of that. Kind of a nice thing from my perspective, it's an all-inclusive lease rate structure. We don't have to necessarily think about janitorial services or, you know, security services and other different things like that, that you know, we would be a little bit thinking about a little bit more with Town Center East. So it's all inclusive. We pay one lease rate. There's, there's a number of services that are included within that for, for our department. You know, one of the downsides, you know, of this, so you know, again, pros and cons is there's no tenant improvements. You know, that were included with this, with the SPSCC lease. That is a full responsibility of, of the city as we, you know, we go to have to remodel those offices. Things along those lines. There was some tenant improvements that were included such as paint and, you know, and recarpeting for the Town Center East. So that was one difference that we had noticed there. You know, the, you know, a nice thing about Town Center East, it was literally right down the street. So you know, it made, you know, getting back over to City Hall, you know, for a, for a meeting very quick, you could walk back and forth. So there was some, you know, that was one of the benefits that we saw there. And there was some part-time security. So we, we have definitely looked at that as a, as a positive. But you know, as you can see, if you're looking at those two lists there, a lot more opportunities with SPSCC on the Town Center East, which was one of the things that helped us move in that direction to determine we needed to consider that in a, in a broader way. So then we, you know, we wanted to look at the numbers. How is this going to compare out? Where, where this lease in front of you is actually for a five-year term. It is renewable. But we anticipate it's a ten-year process before either there's an extent, expansion at City Hall or expansion at the O and M facility to bring our Water Resources Team back, you know, with, you know, collectively with the other Water Resources Staff, we and our City Hall Staff here. So we anticipated a minimum. We're looking at ten years, you know, at this site, although again, the lease agreement is for a five-year lease. So over the, over that five-year period with SPC, it's two hundred and eighty one thousand five, four hundred and twenty dollars just for the, the lease component of it, as I mentioned earlier, about we're anticipating probably about a hundred and fifty thousand for all of the additional tenant improvements and move-in costs, including furniture and, and construction and remodel. Over the ten-year period, you know, you know, when we were comparing, when we did the two comparisons, we're looking about nine hundred and thirty five thousand, three hundred and forty-six, which is inclusive of those initial first-year move-in costs versus one point three million on the Town Center East side. So you know, despite the long list of opportunities that we, we identified with South Puget Sound financially, it made a smarter sense, a smarter decision for us for our utilities as well. There are some challenges, of course, you know, of the move such as this, you know, they can also be considered opportunities. You know, one of them is, you know, team connectivity, making sure, you know, how does our Water Resources Admin Teams, you know, stay connected to the rest of City Hall? To the rest of our Water Resources Teams. We certainly don't want to be out of sight, out of mind. You know, there is a lot of coordination and collaboration we have with almost every department here on, on the city, at the city. So you know, we're, we are going to be examining opportunities and, you know, having, you know, luncheons with other departments to make sure that, you know, we can continue that, you know, good coordination that we have or you know, you know, making sure that, you know, we do stay connected with the other departments out here. New program maintenance, you know, that certainly is always, you know, we talked about like an internship program, a robust internship mentorship program, you know, that certainly can create some stat, you know, challenges with staff capacity. You know, so we're going to need to work through some of that, you know, on the flip side, there's a lot of demands and needs that we have, you know, for our data collection, things that might provide some additional capacity for our staff as we have students collecting data and providing, you know, some limited information along those lines. So, you know, we can focus on the analytics, you know, of those pieces. You know, instead of the, the field collection and, you know, which is can be very time consuming. So, you know, we're looking at ways that we can, you know, balance, balance the new programs, you know, with the capacity with the staff that we have. We are, as I mentioned earlier, we are looking at growth. An opportunity here for us is that is an additional space as we consider additional sustainability efforts as, as we continue to work towards in those with urban forestry. You know, and then again, as I mentioned earlier, there might be some capacity to have some temporary spaces for some other departments in the city as, as their needs grow as well. And then of course, the, the partnerships, you know, being front and center with South Puget Sound Community College, the Evergreen State College. It's some water school district and looking at more of those efforts that we can collaborate on. So really next steps, you know, dependent upon council's approval of the, of the lease tonight. South Puget Sound Community College will be presenting this lease to their board next week. And should that be approved there, we'd potentially be looking at a July one lease execution date for something like that. Which then we can begin our, you know, a remodel, working with an architect and a general contractor and really start looking at, you know, what kind of furniture do we need to move in. And so, you know, kind of thinking about how this is all happening at the same time. You know, it's really those next few phases would be, you know, expedited pretty quickly and, and trying to make those things happen. And then ideally we move in, depending on, you know, Transportation Engineering space needs down there, their staff capacity. You know, we are, you know, we're, we're contemplating whether that move in happens before the remodel or during the remodel or something along those lines, you know, is having those two classrooms gives us the ability to maybe stay out of construction's path, you know, while things are happening. So we're, we're figuring that we do have some flexibility there depending on Transportation Engineering's needs. We've already started conversations with Swalling Lock Architects. They have both experience with City Hall here as well as SPSCC. They've recently remodeled a number of their workspaces at, at SPSCC campus. And so there is a strong working relationship between the city as well as SPSCC. So be able to facilitate that fairly quickly. Excuse me. And, and then, you know, as, after we move in, looking at the EV charger situation, what kind of grant applications? I mean, there was a lot of federal and state funding for that, those types of projects. I know we've already had conversations with SPSCC about what would it look like and helping them identify the, the, the criteria that they would need to be able to apply successfully for some of these grants. So some of those conversations are ongoing. And then of course, you know, as, you know, as we get in, you know, first and centers is, you know, development of that internship mentorship program. Working with some of their professors and see what that would look like as well. While continuing, you know, the, the daily operations of everything we do down in Water Resources. Begin with. As you can see here, I have some pictures. These are what the existing spaces look like. They are really just classrooms. And so those would need to be converted over to off, effective office spaces for us. So we'll have a little bit of work to do to what that would look like, but yeah, so with that, I'd stand with any questions that you might have. Our, our question for you today is to recommend or to request City Council approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease with South Puget Sound Community College for new office space, supporting Water Resources and Sustainability Staff for a five-year term.
Any questions, Councilmember Althausser?
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Dan, for the, for the thorough presentation. I, I appreciate both at this hearing and then also when we got the information at General Government, kind of the pros and cons list, so we could look at those factors and really examine them. And you know, when we did that as, as a group and as a committee, I, I think that it became evidently clear that SPSCC represents the, the better option under the totality of the circumstances. I think we'd all, you know, like to, I mean, we'd all just like to keep staff here in City Hall, but this is reflective of a challenge we have where we have limited space. We really need to hire people and we really need to have a dedicated space for folks to work. So, you know, I, I fully support this plan and endorse it. Might have a little bit of growing pains as we figure out how to be in kind of these two locations for a little while. But I, you know, with, with that, I, I would recommend that we approve and that we authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with South Puget Sound Community College for new office space, supporting Water Resources and sustainability staff for a five-year term.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Althausser, sent by Councilmember Swarthaw. Any discussion, Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, in the summary right in our packet, you specifically noted the trades, trades, trade. I really need to reframe that. Trade Training Program. And I really hope that that could develop, like moving there, right? The internships, apprenticeships. And having Tom Water as a part of that moving forward is, was exciting to me. And then the one thing is when I was looking at comparing the two locations, you know, you have the acronym people and that what you're proposing meets more of those elements. And so that's why I'm in favor as well, because it really aligns with everything that we're doing with the city. So this is super exciting.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, um, I look at it as a win-win. I saw no cons. I saw no cons. A unique partnership. Also, I like the workforce development aspect, the internships with the high schools, local colleges, lots of opportunities there. And how does the team feel about it? It sounds like Dan is ready to go. Dan, how do your team feel about it? Are they ready to go too?
You know, everybody, we've been talking about this for some time now and, uh, you know, the, the team, the team is, is ready to have a course charted in front of us. So that way we can start making some decisions and, and do some things. But yeah, there's, there's, there's general excitement from, for seeing this happen, especially to be on, on the campus over there and from the synergy that we can have with some of the partners and making those things happen too.
Absolutely. Win-win again, and I support it. Thanks, Dan.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. So it looks like we will be having another partnership with South Puget Sound Community College.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you. All right. Our next item is the service provider agreement with TCF Architecture, PLLC for the city operations and maintenance facility design. And Bill Lindauer will present this. So thank you, Bill.
So, good evening, Mayor Sullivan, council members. Uh, I'm here today to present the city operations and maintenance facility. And specifically, we're talking about the service provider agreement that will complete the design for this particular project. I, I'm filling in for Don Carney, our capital projects manager. He can be here tonight, so I'm just covering for him on this presentation. One thing to note is I've been, uh, I've had two really good years at the city of Tom Water, but I haven't been here for as long as this project has been around. So if there, there may be some questions that I do end up deferring over to, to Brandon, because he has a little more historical knowledge on, on the project as a whole. So I wanted to start out by just doing a general discussion about the, the overall view of what's going on. So currently, uh, our operations and maintenance group is right behind us, right behind city hall. And there's a group that provides our street and utility maintenance and also has a fleet of vehicles back there. And the plan is to move that, 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 uh, that group over to the proposed city operations and maintenance facility. That's the perch on and red there, which is the south or the northwest corner of 79th and Trails and Drive. And to the right of that, just for information, uh, the, that's one big parcel. The, the parcel to the right, which is in green, is where the, eventually the proposed park at Trails and Drive will go. And then another component of this project is kind of interlinked, but it is under a separate contract is the, the roundabout that's being constructed or this being designed for Old Highway 99 and 79th. And the reason why that's important is because not only will it help the, the safety of that intersection itself, but it will also assist in the traffic volumes moving through that intersection. Once the operations facility is, is working. So I wanted to touch a little bit on the project history. So this is a very brief project history of a very complex project. But in 2011, the city began searching for a new site. And I think originally that, that effort was to provide a new site for the public works and the parks department, kind of a larger picture idea. In 2014, the, the city actually purchased the Trails End Arena, which is the, the two parcels on the east and west of Trails and Drive, just north of 79th. And then in 2016, once the property was had, the city engaged a service provider agreement with TCF Architecture to complete master planning and pre-design work for the project. And that pre-designed work was pretty extensive. Again, this is just a brief summary of kind of some of the things that occurred during that process. But there was final site location that was basically determining where in fact the operation and maintenance, maintenance facility would fit in the property, facility programming, which included staffing facilities. That was, uh, what facilities are needed, you know, lobbies, uh, offices, break rooms, things like that. And also kind of the size needed to support the staff. And then there was also operational needs, which were really, what is the staff need to do their work? You know, how their maintenance shops, fueling stations, uh, storage areas, things like that. And after the, after the facility programming was completed, then went into building and site, um, pre-design. And that was determining how many buildings were needed, what sizes they were. And then also what kind of site improvements would be needed for the parking lot and stormwater and things like that. And then also the offsite improvements for the project. So they came up with most of this pre-design it during this actual phase of the project. And then there was a, a community engagement component where there were different community events to get feedback from the, from the citizens to engage that into the actual design. And then ultimately a cost estimate for the anticipated construction costs for the project. At that time, the cost estimate came back relatively high and there was a need to kind of downsize the overall project. So instead of the whole parks and public works moving to the new facility, it ended up being just the operations and the maintenance components, uh, moving to the new site. And within that, in that coordination, there was also some subsequent, from what I understand, community engagement that, that ended up moving the O and M facility to the west of Trails and Drive with the park to the east. So this is just a quick little schematic here showing the O and M facility site on the left there in yellow, just north of 79th and west of Trails End. And that's about a six acre component. And then on the right is the future Trails and Park site. And you can see the footprint of the arena that was demolished as part of that project, our previous project the city completed. So this is the facility layout that was provided during the feasibility and pre-design. This was the final alternative that came about. And as you can see, the, almost the entire site for the O and M facility, which is on the, the left there, is being utilized for this project. There are seven total buildings. There was a lot of interest and, and thought put into traffic circulation and reduction in vehicles backing and maneuvering within the site to kind of reduce noise for the adjacent, uh, communities around the area. And it also featured a staff parking lot there in the front, so that staff would have a place to, uh, to park that was different from where the fleet vehicles are. There is an access, the main access is off of 79th with a secondary access on Trails and Drive and then a staff access on Trails and Drive that goes directly into the staff parking lot. This is, uh, just a breakdown of all the seven buildings, A through G. And you can see that the buildings, you know, range from fairly small for the fuel, uh, 3,500 square feet, all the way up to about 13.6 thousand square feet. It covers pretty much all the, uh, components of what is needed. We have administration, maintenance, shops, shops, uh, storage for both, uh, materials and vehicles, fuel and vehicle wash facilities and also, uh, yeah, right, and, and material storage. So there's seven total buildings. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about, we're here to talk about the service provider agreement. So the actual design and permitting of the project. The feasibility and pre-design was completed by TCF Architecture. And we wanted to continue that relationship mostly because of the work that they did previously and also because of the, uh, the knowledge and the experience they have with the project itself. So in working with TCF, we developed the, the service provider agreement, the scope of work that we're, that we have right now. One thing I did want to touch on was, um, because this is primarily architectural site project. It's not, um, probably a typical project for the city of Tom Water, because it has buildings and, and sites and everything else. What we decided to do was develop the design fees for the project using the Office of Financial Management Guidelines, the OFM guidelines. And, um, those are the guidelines that are used by the state of Washington and really are used almost exclusively by DSS and Department of Corrections and probably many other entities to evaluate design fees for architectural type projects. So we felt that it was a really good fit for this project. The design fees are separated into two categories. One is paid basic design fees, which is just generally speaking, what you would normally, what, what you'd normally complete on a project such as this. And then there's also additional design fees, which are specialty items. The basic design fees themselves are based upon a percentage of the overall construction cost. So in this case, they call it the maximum allowable construction cost, which is essentially how much money it actually takes to, to physically build the entire project. And it makes sense in, in the, in the fact that, you know, the more, the more complex a project is, the more expensive it is and the more complex it is, the more design effort is required. So, um, the, the OFM manual provides us tables and other information to actually develop your percentage. In this case, we had multiple buildings that had different complexities. So we kind of use that as a balance in the different percentages to come up with the overall, uh, basic design fee. And then the additional services are really the specialty items on the project. And those were evaluated. The cell consultants provided their scope and their fee. And then, uh, city staff reviewed that information. The scope of work, which is basically telling us, you know, what we're going to do on this particular project. Ultimately, it's to provide a 100% plan, uh, construction, uh, plans, specifications and estimate for the project. So complete construction ready documents and some of the big components that we have in the scope. We have geotech, the permitting effort for the project, a building design, which is functionally the architectural work, civil design, which is our civil on the site and the offsite roadways, uh, structural engineering to support building design, uh, water sewer systems, and then some specialty items like acoustical engineering, mechanical, electrical and plumbing, and then some equipment optimization and then landscape and irrigation. So it's quite an extensive list of items, but it's a fairly complex project as well. For the actual consultant fee, uh, the consultant fee that we have is $2,450,000. Of the, of that amount, um, the basic services came out to $1,622,834. The additional services, the special items, um, $635,783. And the management reserve, we set at 191, uh, 191,383. And that's really kind of a contingency for any design complications that we have during the project that we can utilize during the design process. As far as funding, um, it's kind of split between all these, uh, the different CFPs. We have 33% for general government, 33% for water, 17% for storm drain and 17% for sanitary sewer. And the actual share, shares that are involved with that will be refined once we get an actual, you know, true construction bid and it comes in. So we can define how much the, how much each one of, uh, was. I think the last thing I have for you is, um, this real basic schedule. If council approves, um, we expect to be able to provide notice to proceed in this month with the consultant and the consultants expecting the construction documents can be completed in May of 2024. There any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Kathy?
I have, I have a couple of things that might be necessary to put back up the main, um, plan of the, both the, you know, park on one side and the buildings on the other, because I wanted to ask some questions about that. Thank you. One of, one of my questions is this Trails End Drive, is there a, a plan to do something about that particular road? I mean, it's impossible now to drive down Trails and Drive out that backside and down to Henderson for a car and parking on that street. Two cars can't go down. Will that, is there some plan about that?
Um, so for the segment that is within the project limits here, it's going to be wider than what you have to the north. It'll be 36 feet of pavement instead of 32. And that's really about accommodating parking on both sides and then our larger operations vehicles for those two accesses. To the north though, where it's currently constrained that you're describing, we're not going to change that. That's a 32 foot road. It's actually intentional. We do that on local roads to slow down vehicles. It's the, probably the, the best traffic calming, a permanent traffic calming solution that we have in our toolbox. Because it, I mean, if you think about it, when you drive around like the preserve, um, that particular development anywhere, if you have parking on both sides and in sort of narrow, it's narrow roads, it's really hard to drive fast. And so it is by design to slow down vehicles.
But it wasn't designed for maintenance vehicles. I mean, the, 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 the change in traffic through that part of the neighborhood on a small road is different than how it was designed as a residential area, right?
Yeah, and I understand that. We're, so our vehicles, our maintenance vehicles are not going to be allowed to drive north through that neighborhood unless they're doing service in that neighborhood. That's going to be something that Dan and I manage and we'll have signs up and our staff will know. But our staff, when they're driving vehicles, um, in any of the larger ones, even the, the daily, the smaller city of Tom Water passenger vehicles, they are going to be required to use 79th Avenue, even to get to Henderson, they're going to have to drive around.
Okay. Thank you for that. On the, on the backside there that the, um, that's closest to the residence, what is, is that? Is that parking? Is that, are vehicles going to be parked along there? Is that what that is?
Are you referring to the, um, the, I guess it's light green strip along the?
Nor, the north, the north side.
That's, uh, I think that, well, the, um, the west side is, uh, Stormwater Facility area. And the other one is, uh, I think it's Landscape Buffer up there along the north side, right?
Yeah. So it is Landscape Buffer on the side that you're talking about. The vehicles that you see, uh, along the Landscape Buffer there, those are the vehicles that aren't going to be used on a daily basis. They're going to be the ones that, that dormant most of the time. So they won't be started and stopped. And then the little boxes in the, the, I'll say the upper left on my side. If you're good with the direction, then it would be the northwest corner. That's really, uh, pallets for, um, storage or let's say that we have material for making brine or things, things like that. But the, the vehicles that are along the plan or strip area are not going to be daily used.
Thank you. I have another question about, about parking. Is there, are you going to make use of part of the park location for parking?
For parking for this facility, the O and M facility, is that your question, councilmember?
Just is that, can I, is that going to include a parking lot over there?
Um, I don't think so.
So the parking lot that you're describing on the trail side or on the park side, that has been very popular because it, it kind of looks like it's a parking lot for the park, but it is not. It is actually a parking lot for our staff. It it kind of looks like it's a parking lot for the park, but it is not. It is actually a parking lot for our staff for the operations facility. That was always in the the chosen design when we moved. So the original facility was on what is now the park site. We moved it to the other side of Trails End, even though it wasn't large enough to get it away from a lot of the residences to the east. But it wouldn't fit. So parking had to be on the park side still. We did move. So I drew on a, I'll say, a napkin sketch. I moved some of the parking over to the offside that you see behind the administration building. So we're going to have parking there initially that'll cover most of our staff. But that is in the way of a future building expansion. We decreased the building sizes in order to. Reduce the cost because it was way out of our price range when we did this all. And so in the in the future, building. He, if I see correctly, is going to extend toward the administration building in that parking lot. Your staff will go away. And then all staff will park on the park side in that parking lot.
So is there, and I know the neighborhood is concerned about that parking also being used for park visitors? Is that is that?
It it will not be.
It's it's not going to be open at all to the public?
Uh, it will. It's going to be city staff parking. There will more than likely be gates or access. In all likelihood, anybody could could drive into the beginning because you can have the gate right at the road. So there will be some access, but it is definitely not intended for park patrons. The really the the folks who use the park, the intent is is that they'll be. You know, ideally, it would be folks walking to it. There's going to be a lot of folks who still drive, but it's going to be street parking only. If there were any public parking in that lot, we might consider, we do have ADA parking stalls near. The main entry to the park, but if we were to add any in that, it would be ADA parking. Only to if we needed to make it easier to get to certain amenities in the park.
One final, one final question. Does this? Report that you're giving us tonight and this movement toward design and all of this, does this trigger for the? Opportunity for the community to have input in this like we're receiving tonight, or will there are there any other community meetings planned?
There. So for design right now, as far as community input on the concept and 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 whatnot, we have incorporated that all into what you're seeing and into prior conversations. So really, right now, once you know, if this is Pat, if if you all approve it. And we enter into this agreement, the designers run in full steam and there there's, I I don't know, did we have some community engagement or at least information sharing in the scope?
Yeah. Several.
So so there there is a little bit, but ultimately, when you start design, it's really about run full steam. Because you've got two and a half million dollars worth of people working on it. And then there's some breaks where we do engage. Counsel and in the public since in the scope, just to kind of give an update, this is what it looks like. And then probably is this what you envisioned?
That's good. It it does any of this so design that we're doing here in this conversation include any designing work or? Amenities or anything for the park itself? Or is that a separate thing?
The park is its own standalone design. The the one component of the park that is being designed with this is the frontage improvements, so the street widening and and the sidewalk. But the park itself is being designed by an architect that focuses on parks and landscaping rather than building.
Okay, so one final thing I just want to be clear on is trails in drive from Seventy Ninth down to the narrowing. Of of the road in the neighborhood. You say you're widening that that part?
Yes, it'll be thirty six feet wide. It'll be four feet wider than than the residential area to the north. And again, that's that's to accommodate parking and then we'll have dump trucks. You know, one of our two dump trucks might be on the road and the passing vehicle, it'd be pretty tough if it was like it is to the north as you described.
Thank you. Thanks, Brandon. I appreciate those, that the conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Swarthout? Did you have a question?
I'm good.
Okay. Any other question?
I would like.
Councilmember Swarthout, okay, you're you're on, your mic is on if you want to.
All right. All right, Mayor. I'd like to recommend that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement with TCF Architecture. P L L C for the city operations and maintenance facility design.
Do I have a second for that motion?
This is Angela. I second.
Hey, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Bill. Uh, next is committee reports. I have everybody's microphone on in council chambers. The first one. Is Public Health and Safety Committee, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety Committee will meet June thirteenth at eight A M. Well, we will be discussing Station T one kitchen remodel update. And twenty twenty two police data use of force briefing.
Great. General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our last council meeting. But we do have a meeting coming up on June fourteenth. We'll be discussing progress on the Palermo Trail. We will be having a robust discussion on the multifamily housing tax exemption that we have for our city. Also be talking about manufactured home park tenant protections. And finally, the grant amendment number three to the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan Phase Two.
Great. Budget or sorry, Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee will be meeting on Thursday, June eighth at eight A M. And on our agenda, we'll be discussing the Israel Road and Linderson Way Water Main Project Schedule seventy four project plan. And Schedule seventy four underground conversions, construction agreement. And then we'll also be just talking about the Israel Road and Linderson Way Water Main Project, the authority to solicit bids and to recommend an award.
Thank you. And Budget and Finance Committee has not met, and we do not have a meeting scheduled at this time. So now we'll go to the Mayor City Administrator Report, and I will, John Don, do you have a report at this time?
I I don't have anything tonight. I think we've made some tremendous project progress on some projects that have been around for a long time. So congratulations to the council for that.
Great. And then my report out lately, it just feels like I've been super busy. And then when I put the list together today, I went, no wonder. So on, since our last meeting on May seventeenth, I attended the Wash Dot Marvin Road to Mounts Road Executive Advisory Group. This was meeting number five in our final meeting. So you will be seeing the results of that that study that happened shortly. I've already seen it out in the community at several presentations. Um, on the seventeenth, I also attended a Thurston County Chamber meeting. The seventeenth, I also attended the Inner City Transit Authority Meeting, and I unfortunately did not bring my notes with me on that. Uh, on May twentieth, Tomwater Youth Football Party in the Park, which was really a fun event. That was the wrap up of the leagues. For uh, youth baseball. And so that was a really fun event, and we actually had really great weather. Uh, and on May twenty third, I attended the Monarch Breakfast, and I appreciate everyone who attended. Uh, on the twenty fourth, I attended the A W C. I'm on the representative for the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Cabinet. Uh, so I attended their meeting. I, on the twenty fourth, I attended Community Action Council is Mason Thurston Meeting. On May twenty fifth, I have to say, was one of the really important days for me. And this date has been moving a lot, so I I really had, it really hasn't been notified a lot because it it changed several times. But I was to the Squaxton Island Tribe and signed our M O U with the tribe for our council, the council. Uh, so that was very historic, was able to do that at Squaxton County Tribal Council Chambers. So that was a great event, and that was. Uh, something that I think will be very monumental moving forward. On the twenty ninth, I attended the Memorial Day Ceremonies at the Capitol, including also the Vietnam Veterans Event following. On the thirtieth, I attended J B L M seventh field, seventeenth Field Artillery Brigade Changing of Command. That one was important because that's our connection. To J B L M. Uh, that's our liaison is the seventeenth Field Artillery Brigade. On the thirty first, I attended the Thurston Thrives Elected Officials Council Breakfast. Uh, and then on last Sunday was the opening day of our Tomwater Farmers Market. So I got to attend that and open the market. And then I attended the Executive Seminar for Elected Officials along with Councilmember Dahlhoff. Uh, we did reviewed personal preparedness, hazard response, and regional hazard mitigation plan. And this Saturday on the tenth will be our new event called Dog Days Event at Pioneer Park. So I really look forward to attending that event also. So I was kind of surprised when I wrote down all the things I have been a little busy in the last few weeks. So. Uh, with that, I'm going to now do council reports. And um, I think I will go ahead and do Zoom first, and then I will come to chambers. So Councilmember Jefferson, are you ready?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am. On the seventeenth of May, I attended the EMS meeting. Uh, we discussed a medic one levy budget update. There's no significant change from my last report. But management and all parties are still in discussion to resolve this levy accounting issue. We also discussed the hospital entryway delay fix. This was the posting of two paramedics at the entranceway of the hospital. To return our paramedics and ambulances back to the field faster. It was a success. Though so there is currently a contract in works to make this a permanent fix. Finally, we discussed the state of healthcare delivery in Thurston County. This is a crisis that is not on our radar screen. Um, and we'll need legislate legislative involvement. The fentanyl crisis and rapid increase in population is negatively impacting healthcare delivery. Today, it is much more challenging to hire and retain healthcare professionals. The county coroner is finding it hard to hire medical examiners to staff the office. And clear the backlog of drug overdoses which have exploded in Thurston County. As of thirty August, there will be zero neural surgeons working at St. Peter's Hospital. Because their contract was renegotiated. This means that stroke patients and head injury patients. Will have to be diverted to hospitals in Tacoma. This will have a direct impact on the amount of E M Ts and ambulances working in the field. It will also increase patients pickup time. On eighteen May, I attended the Law and Justice Council. And we finalized and approved our new mission statement and values. I'm on that committee. And we also um, was briefed on the new pretrial P S A Public Service Assessment Program. It's unique because it predicts pretrial outcomes. They look at several factor, age of current arrest, current violent offense. Are dependent charges? Is is it a prior misdemeanor or a prior felony felony convict convictions? A score of one means that they could be more successful on pretrial, and nine means less likely to be successful in pretrial. So there will be more release conditions. And probably more monitoring. They are moving forward to full implementation late summer of twenty twenty three. Finally, we discussed the opioid opioid task force update and a Blake Fix Bill. Bill was recently passed by a relatively strong majority in both houses. Lots of moving pieces. So we will put it on the agenda for a more robust discussion during our next meeting. And that is my report.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Jefferson. Councilmember Kathy?
Thank you. I um, I only had one meeting since our last council meeting, which was the Regional Housing Council. That my colleague, Councilmember Althouser, will report on. And. I start my meeting schedule again tomorrow morning with the Solid Waste Advisory Council. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Snyder?
I have no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Agary?
I did not have the opportunity to attend the E D C meeting on May twenty fourth. I had due duty for that week, so I have no report.
Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you. Keeping with the theme of short and sweet, since our last meeting, I've had six meetings related to my council assignment. So one thing I wanted to circle back on is. At the Thurston Thrives Meeting that the mayor and Councilmembers Swarthout and myself were at regarding opioid rate links to Councilmember Jefferson and. Her committees and Tomwater Hopes and the Thurston County Open Response Task Force, they're talking about a youth council component. And Lacey has one established, pardon me, Olympia's working on one, and that is in our goal that we passed in our last budget is to talk about. The idea of a youth council in Tomwater. So I'm hoping that as that continue moves forward, we can link that to one of our goals in our budget. And so that was just one of the highlights. Which links to all the other ones. And then next week is my banana schedule. So more update next time.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Althouser?
Thanks, Mayor. As noted by my partner in housing, Councilmember Kathy, we both attended the Regional Housing Council Meeting on May twenty fourth. Um, we had a pretty brief agenda. Most of it was focused on revisiting some of the recommendations we made for funding at the prior meeting where we suggested. That the advisory board can take a second crack at one or two of the investments that it sent our way for recommendations. As as a reminder, this was sort of the first time that we'd really engaged in working with that advisory board on achieving a a comprehensive set of recommendations. I'm in order to build in a greater component of subject matter expertise and lived experience. So we had a couple bumps in the road, but then we ultimately decided on recommendations and forwarded those to the county commission for their approval. And I will forward the set of those to council. So you have those for your records. And we had then sort of a technical discussion of what our annual work plan should look like. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Swarthout?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. On May twenty ninth, I had the opportunity to represent the city at the Memorial Day Ceremony that was at, I held at the Oddfellow Cemetery. And then on June second, I had a T R P C meeting. And in that meeting, we had a first review of a carbon reduction program. We're looking at trying to reduce transmissions from the highways and roadways. We also had reviewed the traffic or the transit study performance measure targets. And then we also had, we're looking at allocation of federal funds for the rural mobility. And the last thing that we had an update on was the Martin Way Corridor Study. And then on June fifth, I was on the, let's see, the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee. And I guess we haven't met in many, many years. I have to look at Director Matlock, because he was on that call too. It's been many years since we have been pulled together. So before my time becoming a council member. And on our agenda, one of the items was incorporating tribal coordination policies into countywide planning policies. And what that means that they're looking at adding the tribal members and the ability to participate in countywide planning policies and the process. And so that measure will be going back to the community development directors for their input. And then I think we'll be getting together again later. Then we also had Thurston County had, from their planning commission, we had. Four projects, properties that we're looking at, we had requested an urban growth boundary change. And so. And so, uh, we are going to postpone making a decision on that until there was information, some reports that Thurston County was anticipating coming in that would help us better, make better decisions on that. And then last but not least, Lacey had a request to amend their urban growth boundary to accommodate plans for Keel Park. And so, um, we did approve that. So that was one thing we did get done, so. And then on June seventeenth, I will be speaking yet, once again, at the opening of the, for the Flight Museum and the Air Show. So I will be there speaking for y'all, so thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, so as the public can see, council members stay super busy. So with that, uh, one thing, uh, and I wanted to remind everyone for July, uh, June and July, we'll have our regular work sessions. However, due to timing, uh, there will be two regular city council meetings. The one on June twentieth will, is been canceled because several of us will be going to the A W C Conference in Spokane. Uh, and then the following, uh, council meeting would fall on the Fourth of July. And I'm not sure anybody wants to be here on the Fourth of July. I believe staff will be extremely busy doing other things, so. But we will have our usual work session times, but the, uh, those two particular council meetings, I just wanted to remind everyone. They will, they were canceled, so. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn for the evening, and thank you, everyone.